You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Like to call special meeting for July 20, July 19, 2018 for the Fayetteville City Council to order. At this time, item 2.0 is the invocation. We ask that you would all rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ask the council member, Chris, will give us our prayer?
Bow with me as we go to the throne of grace. Eternal God, our Father, we come before thee this day, humbling ourselves, thanking you for those blessings that you've showered upon us and selfishly asking for more, dear Lord. We're asking for wisdom, strength. Wisdom to contrive and strength to build Fayetteville into an oasis that our children will be proud to return home to. Lord, as we deliberate, give us wisdom. May we do so without discord. May we reside in peace and harmony as we go forth from this place. Be with us, keep us from hurt, harm, and danger. And, Lord, stop the wars and bring the children of America home to their loved ones. These are our prayers and the people of God said, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, council member Chris. Again, we'd like to welcome each of you. We are joined by phone by council members, Art, council member Larry Wright, and council member DJ Hair. You will hear us refer to them throughout the course of the meeting. Welcome, guys. All have good connections, council members that are joining us by phone?
Good afternoon, Mayor. How's everyone enjoying the vacation?
What vacation?
Everything is good. This is Councilman Wright. How's everyone there?
Okay. All right. Good deal. Thank you. Item, and we'd like to welcome all of our citizens that have joined us tonight and also former council member Curtis Worthy. Welcome, sir. Councilors, we move to items of business, or item 3.0 is the approval of the agenda. This time we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
As a motion by council member Chris, second by council member Dawkins, to approve the agenda, any discussion on the motion? Council, all those in favor, ask for your votes. Those by way of phone, can you give us a green or red to approve the agenda?
Art is green.
Hair is green.
Wright is green.
Okay. All greens on the phone and as well as, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those present. Motion carries. Item 4.1, consideration for the contract approval for Shoreline Drive Emergency Culvert Replacement. Ms. Gisele, hello.
Hello. Good evening, council. What we have in front of you is a B recommendation for the emergency culvert replacement for Shoreline Drive. The culvert at this location is severely deteriorated and under capacity. This project was advertised twice with a single bid each time. The recommended lowest responsible, responsive bidder is Linear Construction Company from Snow Hill, North Carolina, in the total amount of $829. As outlined in the CCAM, Shoreline Drive is currently the only accessible roadway to the upper portion of the College Lakes subdivision. Should the culvert and roadway collapse or wash out approximately 200 residential properties, will not be able to travel to and from their homes. So what we are trying to do is we have followed this process, a project through an expedited process. So what we are seeking tonight is trying to get an award for this contract to keep moving this project through an expedited process. So your award will continue to move this project alone. What we are trying to do is that as soon as this contract is awarded, is we'll get the contract immobilized into the job site within the next two to three weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Is council member Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, I would like to make a motion if...
Can I, can I say if there are any questions on anything?
Sure.
But certainly we have it noted. Council, were there any, any questions for Ms. Rodriguez as prior to the motion? And Ms. Rodriguez, I did have one question. So as you explain, as you're looking at these projects and the urgency of it, because I know this will come up on the next item discussed, this is the only entrance into this particular neighborhood. So in the event that you have a failure, that there'll be a problem with accessibility. Is that correct?
That is correct. This neighborhood did have another access prior to the 295 construction, but with the construction of the 295, that additional access they had has been removed. So this is the only access.
Has the source of funds been identified for, for this?
Yes, the funds are in place.
All right. Council member Jensen?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we approve the contract, approve the contract approval for Shoreline Drive Emergency Culvert Replacement.
Thank you. As a motion by council member Jensen, a second by council member Dawkins, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Art is green.
Wright is green.
Hair is green.
Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those present as well as joining us by phone. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Council, item 4.2, capital budget, project ordinance amendment 2019, Ms. Rodriguez?
Yeah, I guess that's me again. So what you have in front of you is the one for the Louis Street Bridge. You are aware the bridge was closed in January 2019 after we did an inspection and the inspection revealed that the deterioration had gone faster than we anticipated. Immediately after the bridge was closed, we quickly started identifying several options for the replacement in which funding alternative was one of the things that we started to consider. We came back to City Council on April 3 with those alternatives and at that time, council directed staff to seek NCDOT funding. On May 31, the Board of Transportation approved the project for funding and what you have in front of you is a municipal agreement from NCDOT that addresses five things. You have not only the municipal agreement, but you also have the, the project, the ordinance amendments and the capital project ordinance amendments as needed to get the municipal agreement in place. And pretty much this municipal agreement is addressing five major items. Number one, the receipt of the federal funds through NCDOT because the bridge was funded 80% from federal funds that are coming through NCDOT. Number two, the project is not only being funded by NCDOT, but now NCDOT will be delivering and managing the project. So the project will not be delivered by city staff. They will deliver it by their staff, by a group of experts from Raleigh. They will manage it completely. In addition to that, they will not only manage the project, they will manage it through a design-build process. So that's the third thing that the municipal agreement addresses. And in addition to that, the municipal agreement also addresses, once they deliver the project, then they will turn it over to the city so the city continues to maintain the roadway as we typically have done. And in the fifth item that the municipal agreement addresses is the 20% match from the city, the $360,000 that we will have to pay. The municipal agreement does also have some language that says, "At the end of the project, we will tally up all the costs. If there is some excess, then the city will be responsible for the excess. If the cost of the project is in addition to the 1.8 million, then we will come back to the city. But if there is also below that, then there will be a reimbursement to the city." So those are the major components of the municipal agreement that you have in front of you tonight. The main reason why we needed to come to you particularly tonight is this is the step that is really needed for DOT to be able to advertise this, this project. Without this step, they can't continue to move forward. From the point that council execute that agreement and we deliver a check to NCDOT, that's pretty much the green button for them to keep moving forward. And from that point, NCDOT takes control of the whole project.
Okay, we do have a question and I had one and I'll, I'll go to Mr. Chris shortly following. So you have some folks here that, that were trying to understand this process. It's been a long process and they had some questions, but I told them we would have a, a discussion that may address a few things and Mr. Chris may hit it, but from what I, I heard you say, which I didn't understand originally, the city will not be in charge of the... Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Wright. I would like to make some comments as well.
Okay. I'll come to you shortly after, after Chris. So NCDOT will, will handle the, the design and the building and the construction of this project. Have they given a timeframe? Because it puts the representatives for this area, myself and other city council members at a disadvantage because this is a process that we actually will not control. Have they given you a timeframe?
They are currently working on that schedule. From the point that we were awarded the grant in May 31 to today, July 29, things have moved really fast. So from the point we were told, you have the grant, that we understood that the project was locally administered, which means that we will manage the project to now that they have agreed to manage the project all together, that's a, that's a big change for us and that's a great news for Fayetteville because now that means that we have a group of experts that do this day in and day out, which are great news for us. That's a big change for us. And we had a meeting onsite last Friday, what they call a scoping meeting, where they define everything to be able to define the ins and outs of the project. How long will it take? What are the aspects of the actual bridge? How, how big is the bridge? What are the dimensions of the bridge? That will define the schedule. They don't have a schedule to provide to us as of right now because we wanted to be able to bring this information to you so that we can give them the go-ahead to keep moving. So we don't have a set schedule right now. The preliminary information they have is that if we are able to give them this information, they at least can advertise the project in September for availability in November, that at least they can start designing the project at that time. Based on the rule of thumb, this express design-build of this kind may take 12 to 18 months at that point. So they estimate that the project will be completed by the end of 2019.
Okay. Well, so, but it all starts with an agreement and the delivery of our check?
That is correct. It starts there.
All right. So council member Chris and then Wright.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Rodriguez, we got about 4,000 cars entering and exiting from Hollywood Heights on a daily basis. And at present, all of them have to go out one way, one, one way only, onto Clifdale at a very dangerous intersection at best. Mr. Mayor, I, I need to say this to you more than anybody because the question that I was going to ask for the citizens of Hollywood Heights that are sitting here that are concerned about when, that's the question, and now we find out we don't know when. I need to suggest to you that when I had the same problem with the bridge on Strickland Bridge Road, I went to certain people in Raleigh and they provided some incentives to the contractor to speed that up. I just don't see that we can wait a whole year to get that bridge in Hollywood Heights in place. I think we, I think one of our options needs to be to talk with our representative who sits on the Transportation Committee in Raleigh about some incentives to get this thing rolling a lot faster than a year from now. 2019 is a long way off and it's a tremendous inconvenience for members in that community. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Chris. Council member Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been working on this Louis Street Bridge project for a long time. The residents of Hollywood Heights are very concerned in the timeframe that it's taking and we understand that it's very common when it comes to bridges and design build, the fastest type and all of these type of things. But the inconvenience of having one way in and one way out is, is presenting a, a big problem for the residents of Hollywood Heights. We're glad that DOT is finalizing for us this opportunity to do, for them to do 80% and the city to do 20% of the project, but by the end of 2019, that's a long time given the bridge has been closed for about nine months or so now. And I would also suggest that we talk to our friends at the state to see what kind of incentives also can be put in place to expedite this design-build project so we can get that bridge open so the residents of Hollywood Heights can have free access to their community once again. There was some information that was going around and they're saying this for the community and also the residents of Hollywood Heights, that the, the project, design project was, was canceled. And that information is correct, that it was canceled because at that cancellation point, DOT kicked in and said, "Well, it wouldn't make sense to spend money on a design phase if we're looking at DOT to do it." So of course, to save the taxpayers' money, to cancel that design project was the right thing to do, but it was canceled. I take responsibility of probably not giving the, the citizens of Hollywood Heights that information, but it did not delay the project. Matter of fact, we saved a lot of money in the process. But some of the concerns citizens wanted to know about the, about the, the cancellation of the design project. And I think she covered that in her presentation just now, but therefore, those that are not clear, I suggest that, Mr. Mayor, that we have a, a meeting at the Hollywood Heights Community Center at their next community watch meeting, bring our staff so we can thoroughly brief the community as where we are right now and hopefully by that time, we'll have some solid dates for them as to when this project is, is getting ready to hit on the ground and work is being done on that project. So I recommend that we do hold a meeting, an information and update meeting at Hollywood Heights next community meeting to answer all their concerns and all their questions.
Thank you, council member Wright. Did, did have a question for you. When King's Grant had to have that emergency repaired, we found a paved, a temporary access point. Have you looked at all available outlets to see if there was another temporary access point that could take some of that strain off of that one intersection? Because it is very dangerous. I mean, I was there and it, it was dangerous anyway and, you know, we were looking at Clifdale and the amount of access they had. Have you examined that temporary access points can be done kind of in the same spirit we did in King's Grant?
We have not examined an alternate connection points at that particular location. I mean, we could take a look, but we do have to keep in mind that the major creek kind of borders that entire neighborhood, so we may face that particular...
Well, council...
Challenge, but we, I mean, we could definitely...
I mean, certainly heard the look, just to see if, that we've explored all possibilities and then possibly, council, maybe with this motion, I'll come to you, Mr. Stone. If we could authorize maybe a letter that we would accompany with this executed document to DOT and, and our state representative to kind of explain the urgency of it, that, you know, 4,000 cars are coming out of one intersection and, and that we have 600 homes, which is three times as many as some of these other areas that were impacted, you know, to see what we could do. But yes, sir, Mr. Stone?
One thing I just wanted to point out with the difference between this one and the one at Shawcroft was we were still in the footprint of the original driveway when, when we did the emergency or simple. But the difference is if we tried to do it somewhere else, we had to go through all the environmental permitting process to do even a temporary. That's the piece that takes so much time and that's the reason the design-build part is such a quicker, I mean, by the time we have approval even for temporary, we'd probably be well under construction with the, with the new bridges. It's the environmental piece and the permitting piece that takes so much time that, that the...
And you said, why did we, how did we circumvent that at King's Grant? Why, why the same environmental processes at King's Grant?
Well, when we did the temporary, we're still in the same footprint of the original, of the original bridge, the original culvert that was, was destroyed. We were still in that same, in that same level.
Proximity to it?
Yes, sir.
So, so as you explore this, are there any opportunities in that close proximity that would allow egress?
I don't think so. We'll look into a little more detail, but I don't think there's any opportunity to be able to, to, to offer any, I think that would defeat the purpose of even saving the extra money, even having any time. I think by the time we got the permitting piece out, we would well be under, well, well be underway for the construction.
All right, but you'll get back to us on that. All right, I do have a couple of questions. Council member Cullerton and then Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe there's any type of traffic control right now over there. Is that the case? A, a officer directing traffic during those peak hours? We've had that in other parts of the city, I know, like entering to the Van Story neighborhood off of Morganton during the school hours. That has alleviated a lot of pressure at those hours, especially when the school buses and the kids are getting dropped off at that area. Have we looked into that to help alleviate some of that pressure in the traffic during those peak hours?
There's actually a, a traffic signal way at that location.
There's a, a traffic signal, but would, would it benefit more to have an actual person directing that traffic since a traffic signal is going to be set on the same time patterns?
We, we can verify that, but we can actually, we can actually manipulate that traffic signal if we need to, but we can check to see if, if by chance that would help in that area. Yes, sir, we can look.
At least for the time being, it may alleviate some of that.
Peak hours, I like that. Council member Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having lived through this and still living through it over on, on, in District One, I understand everybody and how they're feeling and they want it done now and, and I, I get that because it's very frustrating, especially if they're in a dangerous situation. I'm going to ask this question and I don't, I read over it today and I don't think there's an answer in this. I do know, even going back to the culvert that we're talking about on Shoreline, when this happened on Shawcroft and we had to go to the back end of College Lakes to get out, that took us our, you know, our 15-minute way to get out. I under, I remember of two days of all these cars coming and using these roads, the, the roads in College Lakes started filling it and started, you know, we've had to do work over there because, and I heard 4,000 cars going. So I guess my question, I'm going to go back to council member Chris, is maybe that we do need to call our state legislation and have them come down in charge of DOT and look and see if there is another way out just to, because it's going to take, it's going to take, it's not going to get done as fast as everybody wants it to get done. I mean, that's, that's the reality of it. We can sit here and say, "It's going to happen, we're going to start tomorrow," but it's still not going to be done as fast as everybody wants it to. And I know that we had a situation that was probably in our favor, that it just went straight off the road, but maybe we can go and maybe just walk it and then just look at it with different eyes that they can have another way out. I, I really agree with that. And are the roads working is my question? Are the roads holding up? Are there different roads that are going down?
No, ma'am, it's still, the, it's still the same driveway, just what we did was with, with Louis Street Bridge was an access to Skiba.
Right.
And since that, the, the traffic that would have normally used that now, it just, it puts more traffic at the other entrance.
And, and is that entrance holding up?
Yes, ma'am, it's fine. We haven't seen any issues with the, with the pavement or anything.
But I, I do agree with council member Chris. We need, we need to move on it because it's not going to get done fast enough.
Thank you, council member Jensen. Council member Chris?
Mayor, Mr. Stone, Ms. Rodriguez, yes, there is a light there at Clifdale, but picture this now, at least a thousand cars trying to come out of there in the morning to go to work. Now put some school buses in there as well that are picking up high schoolers and Clifdel Road is a major thoroughfare. I mean, it's zoom, 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 and both directions. That is a very dangerous situation. Now let me tell you, over at Gates Four on whatever that street is, they put a temporary bridge around there, Ms. Rodriguez, you know that, okay? While they were working on replacing that, they had a temporary one there. I don't know if there's room on Louis Street or not, but we got to find another answer to this. They got to have two ways in and out. You got to survey that as fast as possible. We'll work on this end. We, I think we're going to approve this, the money, but we got to try to speed it up some and find another way in and out of there, Mr. Stone, Ms. Rodriguez, okay? Because as soon as school starts back now, the high schools and all, then you complicate it. You got a thousand cars that are behind a school bus trying to pick up students. You with me? And so it's not going to get better, it's going to be exacerbated when schools open once again, okay? As it has been in...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, council member Wright. Hold on one second. Council member Chris, are you, okay. Council member Wright, yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This situation is, is critical for the residents of Hollywood Heights as we all have been discussing. Uh... discussing. When you talk about a bridge, the safety, and we understand that sidewalks are going in, which the resident has been asking for for years, which is a plus, but the fact still remains that it's taking too long for this bridge project to start, and we find now it's going to take longer for it to complete. There's a question also about the Golden Leaf Foundation, and if someone could ask me about, answer me about the foundation money going to Recondah, was funded for earmarks for the bridge, but was, but went to Recondah. Talk to me about that, so the residents can understand what happened there, why and how much money was transferred to the Recondah Bridge project or the Recondah area that was earmarked for the bridge in Hollywood Heights.
We have Assistant-
That's something that-
City Manager-
Talking about at last chance, but I want them to understand that we're not putting them on a delay in putting other projects before a project in Hollywood Heights.
Yeah, well, City Manager Ryanstein is here, who handles the Golden Leaf, and I think there was some misunderstandings, and we talked before the meeting that there were two different pots of money and two different rules and what met the Golden Leaf's criteria. So you, would you want to, like to explain that?
So we already have approved, I think it was close to $800,000 for debris removal in multiple creeks. We will, I think Giselle has the actual specific creeks where we are, but we started the construction July 9th, and we should be moving, what, in the next 90 days in the Hollywood Heights area. So it is a little delayed. The money is there, contract has been executed, but as far as the debris removal in the creeks, that has already started.
There's two different things. I think he's addressing the question as to whether Golden Leaf funds, this bridge qualified for those funds, and if those funds were redirected to another project. If you can just explain that that was not the case. What you're talking about now is debris removal from creek beds. They've, they've given us money for that. Hollywood Heights is on that list as well to remove debris. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct. There was no dollars available for the bridge repair or anything in that-
So that did not fit within Golden Leaf's-
That is correct.
-scope of what qualified for money. And that's, Councilmember Wright, is that what you were trying to clarify?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to clarify, so the residents could understand the process and what happened with the Golden Leaf Foundation funding, to let them know that all money's allocated to the bridge in Hollywood Heights is going to that bridge. Now, the clean-out for the Golden Leaf, we got funding for design, for clean-out from after the disaster. The residents wants to know if that is the case. Why is the creek still has debris from the storm of Matthews? When we say it was promised in our last meeting with them, that we would start on that project immediately, and I was under the impression it was going to be another two weeks or so before it started, and that was over a month ago. But I'm hearing now that there's another delay. Is that right, Jay?
Yeah, the contract was actually, the work began on July 9th, so yes, it was delayed a bit. The Hollywood Heights debris removal was one of five Golden Leaf projects. We received a total of $4 million. This was about $800,000. And again, they will hit the area in Hollywood Heights as far as the debris removal, probably within the next 60 to 90 days.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Arp?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. When we talk about talking to our delegation, I would just advise the person we really need to speak to is Senator Meredith. He is the key guy, he's on the DOT board, he's the chairman, and so, you know, I would recommend we talk to the senator and see what kind of assistance, accelerated assistance we can get from the state.
Okay.
All right, so I think, think we're clear, so Council, as we bring this to a conclusion, we will need a motion to authorize-
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I want to make that motion.
Okay, all right. So the motion that I hear you making, Councilmember Wright, is that you authorize the city manager to execute, sir?
Can I make that motion?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to make the motion to adopt the Budget Ordinance Amendment 18-1, Capital Improvement Ordinance Amendment 2019-12, and the resolution authorizing the municipal agreement with North Carolina Department of Transportation, NCDOT, for the design build of the Louis Street Bridge.
Thank you, sir. There's a motion by Councilmember Wright, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for votes.
Fox Green. Wright Green.
Okay, all right. Councilman Hare?
Oh, sir, I spoke, I said, "Hare Green."
Okay, we didn't hear, we didn't hear. So Madam Clerk, that's unanimous, there was a mistake by Councilmember Cullerton, so that is unanimous.
Thank you.
I just wanted a quick discussion on that prior, but that's okay, I was going to pass the motion. I was just also going to caveat that we not neglect looking at that area for options while we're going through this process, and that we get a report back on what those options were, whether it be some type of traffic control over there, alternate access, and of course, as was mentioned, discussion with the state levels, in particular Senator Meredith.
Yeah, so that was good, good points that I think you, you heard clarity on that. So when can we expect to hear back from you, Mr. Stone?
We'll try to do that in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It's Councilman Wright. I want to suggest also in not forgetting about the Louis Street Bridge project and the citizens of Hollywood Heights, the next meeting that's coming up, that we prepare to give a complete briefing and presentation to the citizens of Hollywood Heights, even with the decisions that we make about the light, how we're going to handle that influx of traffic because of that one in-way and one in-way out and in, and how that could be a dangerous hazard. We definitely don't want any accidents or anyone to get hurt or killed at that intersection because of the closing of Louis Street Bridge. So I just would highly suggest that we, we stay on it, and we keep the citizens informed on every move we make, so they can understand where we are at all times.
Yes, sir, I think that's clear, and I will be available for that next meeting. I'll make myself available to accompany the staff and Councilmember Wright there. I think part of the anxiety is the communication piece, so if there are any changes, delays, let us know, so that we can let the citizens of that neighborhood know what's going on, okay? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That motion carries. Item 4.3 is the ballpark stadium low voltage cabling, audio, video, security installation. Mr. Bauer?
Evening, Mayor and Council, Kristoff Bauer, Deputy City Manager. Just quickly, we have before you a contract for award for low voltage cabling, audio, video, and security installation at the stadium. This is within the owner's preference items in the stadium within the existing budget. It's slightly delayed, because we had to rebid it a couple of times in order to get better value contracts and reduce the cost. It's still higher than we had initially anticipated, but we do need to move forward on it in order to stay on budget. We bid this the second time, two different ways. We bid it both as individual projects and also as an all-inclusive contract. We're recommending an all-inclusive contract as the best value within telecom. That gives us two benefits, not only is it the best price, but it puts all the scope of work under one contractor, so that we don't have to work about coordination between different pieces, because all this work kind of happens in the same place. It's all part of wiring the stadium within the same conduits, so it makes it easier for us to coordinate and work on potential additional VE options with one contractor.
I do have a question for you, sir. Why do we constantly miss the mark on these estimates? Okay, so as I was reading this, it said that the amount we had allocated was 425, is that right?
That was our initial budget.
Okay, and Stadium Columbia, which we based our stadium after, it was 543.
That's correct.
So where did the 425 come from in the first place?
425 was basically a reduction, and our stadium is smaller than the one in Columbia, so we believe that we could actually beat the price in-
But when, when we're doing these estimates, are there any professionals involved or staff just making guesses at how much it'll cost? Because what happens is, when it comes back to us and you say that you've missed it, then it looks like we're over budget, when it was never budgeted in a realistic manner in the first place. So even though you've taken that into consideration, I guess you said, "Okay, we'll be, you know, 10% smaller than Columbia, so therefore it'll, it'll cost 10% less." Did you base that on any, is any professional estimates happening?
Yeah, we worked with our consultants, our project consultants, Jason Fryer, who we've, Hog Brawl Construction, or Hog Brawl LLC. We talked to those, our design team, and we did that in developing the budget that we proposed.
And Jason missed it by $200,000, even though he had just did the process?
Yeah, we, yeah, sir, yes. So we were, we were truly shocked. The first time we put this out to bid, actually, the AV was over $1 million. So we walked through that with, and pulled back the scope and changed the revision, and again, went through VE alternatives to try and bring it back down.
So did you get any of those estimates or bids for the estimate in writing?
No, because we didn't get bids, we prepared estimates.
I understand that, but did you, those estimates that you got, did anybody respond back in writing with, this is what they believe it to cost?
We put together several budgets for this, sir.
My question is, professionals that you sought to get this information from, did they respond to you in writing?
No, we didn't go through that process. We had conversations and developed the budgets, working with our team.
So Council, we've got to change this process, because I'm tired of going on radio stations and talking about budget overruns and cost overruns, and we're never even starting giving ourselves a fair chance. And so this may be something that we talk about, I mean, how much would it cost to actually have engaged a couple of audiovisual companies to give us some realistic figure to start with, so that we're not budgeting money that is unrealistic? You know, it's like we're saying, we want to buy Cadillac for $20,000, and it costs $50,000. And then when you come back and tell us it's $60,000, now we've got to explain why we're over budget $40,000.
Right, we understand that. We put together this budget before we even have a full design.
I understand, but you didn't put it together with any credible estimates in writing, based on what you just told me?
We didn't go out and get bids, sir. No, we did not get bids.
Okay, all right. All right, Council, I'll look to you for action on this. From something that was unrealistic to start with. Councilmember Dawkins?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I please the council make a motion that the city council authorize the city manager execute the agreement with Intelecom to provide the equipment insulation services in the amount of $657,000, if that motion, Ms. McDonald, is in order. If that-
I have a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Who was that on the phone? That was Councilmember Hare?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Councilmember Hare is the second, so on the Dawkins-Hare motion to approve, Council, I'll look to you for action.
Wright Green.
Uh, Mr. Arp and Hare?
Green, Hare Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Yeah, he said green.
Yeah, Hare has green, green, uh, Hare has green hair.
All right, Council, I think that concludes our business. We'd like to thank citizens of Hollywood Heights, and we know that we're, we're on it.
Yes, sir.
All right, so Council, we'll get a motion to adjourn? All right, thank you.